Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call this meeting to order at six o'clock. And first, we're going to start with a prayer by James Shittler.
Let's bow our heads. Gracious God, we thank you for our leaders and we pray that you would give them wisdom as they seek to serve our sake. We pray that you would continue to bless us and make us a community that people would want to come to. And we praise it as we do business here, that the decisions we make would be according to your will, for your glory and the good of our neighbor. We ask this in your son's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Asmael Lindell?
President.
Alderman Elber? Alderman Lightford?
Here.
Alderman Lindell?
Here.
Alderman Proctor?
Here.
Alderman Riegel?
Here.
Okay, next, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Alderman Lindell. Second by Alderman Riegel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, our public comments. Do we have anyone that is here for public comments? Okay. Moving right along, we're gonna go down to additions and deletions to the agenda. And I do have one thing that I want to add to the agenda, and it is the bid for an airport laundry and I can make that number four under new business. There are a motion to accept adding that to the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion made by Alderman Lindell, who has a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Lightford. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, under old business, first, we were revisiting this, the air evac that the city would buy for the employees, which also, one of the things that was being asked is, does it cover the household? Which it does. Got just a few more details about that. First of all, the cost per employee is seventy-five dollars. So, we have approximately ninety-nine employees. So, close to seventy-five hundred dollars would be the cost for this. A couple of things in the contract that I just want you guys to be aware of, that with this air med care network, the patient must be, will be, transported to the closest appropriate medical facility for medical conditions that are deemed by this company, by this provider. They have to approve. The attending medical professionals must deem that they are life or limb threatening or that could lead to permanent disability which require emergency air ambulance transport. Their medical condition, not membership status, will dictate whether or not they are air transported. That is appropriate and required. Under all circumstances, they retain the sole right responsibility to determine whether or not a patient is flown. So, I wanna make sure that y'all know that that is part of the contract. And what happens when someone has an insurance policy that covers this, that they will pay, they pay the overage. So, if you have a medical plan that covers that already and it doesn't cover fifteen percent or whatever, they will just cover the part that your regular insurance does not cover. Also, just a reminder that, you know, if they are injured on the job, the city would be the ones that would be responsible for, for their care if they were, you know, injured. Work comp would take care of any of this if it was city-related. Are there any questions? That I can answer? I'm not the insurance expert, I just pass along the information.
This is no cost to the employees, is that correct?
That's correct. This would be something that we would have to put in the budget.
I'm the one brought it up, so I think we're approved.
Excuse me, I have one question before we do. So, to get the total cost, you would go eighty-five employees times the seventy-five, making the total cost per year, is that correct?
Well, that number of employees is a little bit low, so per, per employee, it's seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, I think, I think we said last time, there's ninety-nine employees.
Yes, yes.
I'll say that to the budget, whenever we get to the budget again.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table from Alderman Lightford to accept the air evac proposal, and the second by Alderman Dale. So, let's, let's take a vote on that, unless there's any more discussion. Alderman Lightford?
Yes.
Alderman Lindell?
Yes.
Alderman Proctor?
Yes.
Alderman Riegel?
No.
Asmael Dale?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the next, next on the agenda is the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash five dash one. Okay, okay, okay. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna open it up for a public hearing on this ordinance.
Mayor, would you summarize the ordinance, please?
Summarize what?
The ordinance?
Yes. I'm just gonna, I'll probably just read the majority of it, but it was an ordinance by the mayor and board of Alderman at the town of Livingston amending permit fees for building permits under Title XII of the municipal code. It recognized there's a significant commitment of time and municipal resources in the inspection of new construction and other work for which a building permit is required within the corporate limits of the town of Livingston. The fees assessed for building permit applications are intended to offset the administrative cost of inspecting construction work and ensuring compliance with the building standards adopted by the municipal code. The current fee of one-half of one percent of the total cost of construction is insufficient in all cases to offset, offset the administrative costs of inspection and compliance efforts. It's in the best interest of the town of Livingston's citizens to monitor and enforce compliance with the building codes adopted by the town for health and safety and welfare in public. It's determined, it's in, in, in the best interest of the town to set a minimum standard building permit fee to effectively meet the administrative cost of building inspection and enforcement within the corporate limits. So, it, it's setting the fees for building permits are as follows. One-half of one percent of the total cost of the project, or seventy-five dollars, whichever is greater. This ordinance should become effective upon its time of passing.
Okay, my name is Ron Lane, just one question. Every once in a while, we, and I believe appropriately, allow that there will be no permanent fees for some special situation like maybe somebody building housing that we've agreed that there won't be permanent fees. That was our town's participation in something like that. Wasn't there some sort of habitat humanity kind of thing where we agreed no permanent fees?
What we've done instead of waiving those fees is consider it a charitable donation to the town because we have appropriated some money in the budget to make charitable donations. So, that's how we're handling that instead of waiving.
And yet, that entity would still be inspected and all those things. All those chores, we would still do even though they're not really paying the fee.
Every time you issue a building permit, you're inspected.
Thank you.
Any other comments about the ordinance? Okay, at this time, I'll close with a public hearing and restart the meeting. Do I have a motion? On passing this ordinance?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we got a motion. By Alderman Lindell, you have a second.
I'll say it.
Okay, the second by Alderman Proctor. All in favor, say aye.
Alderman. I've got a question for you.
Okay.
At what stage in your building do we actually require a building permit? How much building do we have to do before that we have to buy this building permit? You understand what I'm talking about?
I understand what you're saying. I can't remember exactly if there is a minimum limit.
No, I, I didn't, I didn't hear it one last time. And probably seventy-five percent of our building is below this seventy-five dollar fee. If it was going one-half of a percent, like we are. So, I mean, if somebody's at the back porch repairing a couple of steps, nailing a few boards, we're gonna have to fill the permit?
That permit's not gonna be required for that. And I, I shouldn't know the fee on that, but it's, there's a minimum fee on when you have to have a permit.
I think that's right, but I don't know what it is.
Yeah.
I don't see a minimum.
I didn't, I didn't remember hearing anyone. So, if you, if you're gonna set this price or whatever, you need to say X amount of, X amount of dollars and up. Because I mean, you know, somebody out there, a weekend warrior hammering a few nails or building, the inspector pulls up and says, "You gotta buy a permit." I don't think that's right. Matter of fact, I think it's too high anyway.
I know there's a minimum, I just, I can't, I don't remember it is on our, on the website that I know it is available. It's just not on that application.
Can we table it until next meeting?
I say we table it until next meeting. I can probably text someone by the end of the meeting, but we can just wait until next meeting to do this. If I have a motion to do that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Lindell to table the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash five dash one. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
And the second by Alderman Riegel. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next up is Jean Gant with our Main Street Historic District.
Hello, everybody. Wanted to give you an update on our concert that we had the other night. If you were anywhere in the neighborhood of downtown Livingston, you probably saw all the commotion. It was extremely successful. We had one of the largest crowds we've ever had in town. Maybe one time it was a little better, but we, we're gonna go with this was the best one ever. We know we accounted for about a thousand tickets that were pre-registered, people pre-registered for. And we think about another five to six hundred people at least showed up. So, it was somewhere around fifteen hundred to two thousand people. Every parking spot in town was full, including the square and down toward the community center. The whole place was full. And everybody had a great time, there were no, no issues that we ran into. Everybody behaved herself, so it was a great success. This coming weekend is Pioneer Day, it starts off on Friday. It'll be again on Friday, Saturday as usual, but it will be at, at Central Park this year. We called, we were, put it there for the, for the penalty construction. We didn't know when that would take place, so we went ahead and committed to moving it for this year. So, those are the two, two things I wanted to talk to you about, talk to you about the, the activities that we've been up to. Report on the projects. Well, before I get to that, August the second, I'll remind us, August the second is our next concert. And then there's one on August the ninth as well. Those are ticketed events, there will be a charge for those. So, we're hoping that we have the same size crowd, if we get that same, same size crowd, we'd be in good shape. For the projects up on the square, we have concurrence from TDOT on the courthouse project. There were, as Ray mentioned last meeting, there was some additional cost and that money was available from TDOT to cover that. We're scheduling a contract or a construction meeting in the next couple of weeks. And I think that there will be a contract at some point to brought to you for approval. So, that's about to get underway. We anticipate the timeframe on that is about four months, depending on weather. Maybe a little faster, but if the weather is bad, then of course that'll slow everything down. We will lose the parking places on the inside of the square. And we're working diligently with the business owners and building owners and merchants to find suitable off-site parking for them to keep the spots open for their customers. We've got a map prepared to, to show where alternative parking is so that the customers could park there as well if they wanted to. It'll be tight, but we are gonna do everything we can to make it as smooth as possible. On the sidewalk projects, I don't have an update on that other than we still don't have the approval from TDOT. We're still waiting on that. The Little and Cedar Streets, no more update on that as well, it's still where it was before. And I think that's all I have. Unless you have something to add, Mayor.
I don't think so. And as soon as we know a notice to proceed date and they give a date from mid-state construction on when they'll be starting, we'll make sure we get that date out to the public as far as parking. And we have some parking maps that we're gonna provide to show that, so.
And I think we talked about doing a, a visit to all the merchants around the square as well so that they are fully informed and understand what's going on.
Okay, thanks, Jean.
Now, Jean, just for people that are listening in, the parking is only affected while construction. We don't lose that parking permit, right?
That is correct, yes. It's only for construction, it's not permanently. And that's one of the reasons we wanna go around and talk to everybody too, is there had been some misconception about what was gonna happen up there. There's, the monuments are staying, they're not gonna be removed. It's gonna be much, it, it's a beautiful square now, but it's gonna be much better after we get these sidewalks fixed and, and some of the changes made, so it's gonna be a great place.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Jean. Next up is Zach Stevens from our Chamber of Commerce.
Howdy. Thank you all as always for leaving a few moments for me to speak. I've been on the job for about two months now and I wanna share a few of the strategic areas of focus that the Chamber is gonna be working on in the year ahead since I've had a little time to get some footing. So, the high, and this is gonna be very high level and then in the coming months, I'm gonna share more detail on these areas. So, of course, we work with the Main Street Historic District Commission on events that happen around our downtown area and various initiatives and hope, and will continue to make those events a success. And want to, of course, make the church street in that area continue building upon the revitalization of that area, sorry. In addition, we want to be seen as a primary catalyst for economic development. And what that means is working with our established, established manufacturers, to attract new business and foster an environment of entrepreneurship. In addition, we want to be seen as a place where they can come and, for, you know, expansions and any other resources they might need. In addition, tourism is huge, of course, and that's part of what Main Street is doing. But we, of course, know that every marketing dollar we invest promoting Livingston and Overton County returns value through increased tourism and community visibility. And our efforts will, of course, put the city and of course also the county on the map as a destination to visit. We're, of course, also working on workforce development. And part of that is working with our educational, higher education partners and building some strategic partnerships with them. And we're, we have some great assets here with Ball State and TCAD. And we're truly blessed to have those many small towns outside, we don't have that. And of course, we have the proximity to Tennessee Tech as well. So, we want to make sure that we are working with them to support economic growth and making sure that businesses can find skilled workers. And finally, I would say, coming from working around government and around the capital, advocacy is a huge component, especially whenever it comes to our Main Street Historic District Commission. We, you know, and even from a Chamber perspective as well, I think we need to be a unified voice for all businesses in Livingston, Overton County. There was a bill up in the legislature this past year to fund the downtown revitalization program in perpetuity if that bill fails. So, moving forward, we wanna make sure we're at the capital advocating for that so we can keep that money moving forward. So, to close on this, economic development, tourism, workforce development, advocacy, and working with our Main Street is kind of what we're focusing on in the year ahead. And I'm gonna be talking about those names in more detail as we move forward. Also, wanna hit on two things real quick. Our unemployment numbers for the county are actually quite, quite good. They're actually better than the state for our latest numbers. We're at two-point-eight percent for April, which is the latest numbers. And the state was three-point-nine, or two-point-nine, excuse me. And our sales tax collection for Overton County was also up this past month. So, any good ways of really getting up. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Zach. Good news. Okay, next on the agenda, I have a resolution I'm gonna bring out to sell with some surplus property by the Livingston Police Department. So, the town of Livingston Police Department has on, has on its inventory two pieces of equipment. Has been identified this equipment as being surplus to the needs of the town and requested by the chief of police as determined to be in the public interest to sell this equipment. Chief of Police has requested that this equipment be declared surplus to the needs of the town and sold, so that the police department will no longer be required to maintain this equipment on its inventory and account for them on an annual basis. Now, therefore, with, be it resolved by the mayor and board of Alderman of the town of Livingston. Section one, the following described property is hereby declared to be surplus to the needs of the town of Livingston. One is a nineteen-eighty-one International Harvester Loader Five Thirty. And the next one is a two thousand and five John Deere Eight Fifty J Track Dogger. The above described surplus property shall be sold. We've got public auction here, but it's Gov. Deals is where the property will be sold. This resolution shall become effective upon its passage, the welfare of the town requiring it. Does anyone have any questions? And we have Chief Smith here, if there are any questions about this.
I'll make a motion to approve as long as we change the public auction to whatever we need it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Alderman Dale, do you have a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, second by Alderman Proctor. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, next up is the budget. Joel will be coming to the podium, he'll work with us.
Each of you should have a copy of the proposed for the first reading of the budget. According to the comparison currently available is the original budget from the previous year. Mayor and I have, and Phyllis, our recorder, have gone through a great deal of these items looking for abnormalities, significant changes from last year, projected numbers from this year which are not good, available. Those should be available by the second reading. Then we can ask, dive into those numbers at that time a little bit more. As far as the general fund, we're looking at, at there's various taxes, the big first category on page one, increasing to approximately three-point-eight million, three, three million eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-ish. Governmental grants, the tiered, shares of revenue would be increased by approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand. I don't wanna read through every number, but I'm definitely happy to discuss any that stick out to you. There are raises that are projected, you see the increase from the original budget to the proposed budget. I understand that the original budget does not necessarily reflect the ending budget for twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. I understand that the original budget is, does not necessarily reflect the ending budget for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. As any budgets, you're, we will have proposed amended. Twenty-four, twenty-five not, has not yet been amended. That's why you don't have the budget, original budget right now. The amended budget will be presented to you on, I believe it's June twenty-third. We won't have those numbers ready until we assess where we are with the current numbers for twenty-four, twenty-five, which naturally ends on June thirty, twenty twenty-five. So when we have those projected numbers, we'll have to amend the budget to, I say we've got, uh, particular line on our category that says the budget was, was proposed for that particular category, let's just say, um, general government, which has, um, majority of the employees, or a great number of employees, expenses and repair costs, city garage, just aside that, had a budget of one million oh fifty-two that was projected, and it's, there have been unknown expenses that carry beyond that approved budget. We have to amend the budget to correctly appropriate additional funds to cover the expenses that have been incurred. Same thing for revenue, where we projected one million eight hundred eighteen thousand, um, property tax. We'll have that final figure because you're continuing to collect property taxes even at this time, late in the year. So we'll amend it if necessary to, or like more accurate number. Same thing for every page, the expenses would be compared to the original budget, and those that have a significant change will be amended, or amended. Numbers will be provided to, to assess whether or not to amend it or not. The general fund as it is right now, the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six budget is projected to have a excess expense over projected funds of three hundred and seventy-two thousand seven, nine sixty-nine, which is on page four at the bottom. With all said and done, there way the additional grants that are not yet projected to be received in twenty-five, twenty-six. Also, your expenses that are projected may not materialize, or you may have more expenses. At current time, the mayor is protecting a three hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred sixty-nine, essentially charged to the equity, beginning equity, which is projected to be three million two hundred forty-three thousand five, or three, thirty, leaving a strong equity balance at the end of two point eight million seventy thousand three sixty-one. The street fund is pretty much a wash. Uh, expected to perhaps dip into the equity of about fifteen hundred and fifty. That's a good changes there. Home rehab has no activity proposed for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. Page seven, the drug fund is, has very little activity revenue protected to offset the expenses. Dustville Development Fund has, uh, the same projected income to cover really low expenses. So that's gonna be, whatever is received generally is the only activity. The General Death Service Fund is strong. We are looking at, that's not presented on here, but, um, there is supposed to be a four hundred thousand dollar transfer out, a one hundred thousand dollar transfer out to the general fund to help cover the excess, expenses, the expenses that exceed the projected revenue. What is not on here, I'm just now reminded about it. I believe the mayor is going to protect or, um, ask that you look at increase in the property tax by a nickel, which is the minimum required, minimum suggested increase annually by end of house. That is not reflected on this until you guys look at it and approve it, if you decide to do that. Water and sewer fund is projected to have a small increase of twenty-one thousand, all things being as are predicted. And S Fund Two is predicted to cover its own expense, or cover all costs with the projected revenue. What sort of questions do you have, Lori?
Now, we scheduled a workshop to go over everything too. Is that what we do?
We haven't at this, at this time, but that's something that we can discuss if that's needed.
I'm sorry?
I said, I said I, I don't have anything scheduled at this time, but that's something that we can set up if that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate, you know, telling us about it, but there's a lot of figures in here.
Take, take a look at it as well, just to, you know, ask any questions that you need this week after you go through it.
I feel that the mayor has presented her numbers very well. Uh, being a known spokesperson, I haven't worked with you for many, many years. I believe her numbers are very solid. And we had worked quite a bit this afternoon after I helped her compare from one budget to another, looking at the projected numbers that we do have. Um, I advised her accordingly, some items, I think they're very low. I think we need to look at this. There were number, there are several numbers I thought she had under projected on revenue. Um, some of those were water, sewer gas charges. Potential likely to receive grants from the state. I thought that was understated. Uh, we looked at payroll. I had questions about that. We talked about her numbers that she was projecting as far as increases. We spent the greater day afternoon looking at select items. They're very strong, and she's done a good job.
Well, I'm sure she has, but I'd like to have more detail.
Oh, I'm not asking you to be honest, sorry. I, I don't, I want you to look at each number. And, um, if you have questions, let me know. Let Bill know. Check out those questions too. But, um, I'm not telling you to take it full, at full strength right now.
No.
Two on it, which you don't, if it doesn't taste good, let me know.
So the second reading is on the twenty-third, and then it has to be followed by the thirty, thirty-third?
Thirty.
She's got thirty, thirty days?
Thirty, yes.
That's correct.
And one of the items that I have in here, um, on, um, in, in the public sector, I am doing some salary comparisons to see if, you know, we, we have our schedule where we do steps, um, for yearly raises, and I am, uh, studying to make sure that we are on track with other municipalities our size. So there may be some provision needed to, um, go past one step on a few of them. And that's something that I'll, um, put before you, uh, for the final reading at, at the work session, um, to, to get your approval before I could do that, obviously, so. Any other questions tonight that you guys have?
I do wanna add, since I thought about it, uh, it's unusual to, it's somewhat unusual to have a negative projected net change in fund balance on page four. I attribute, I refer mine to the gov, the COVID money that you've had for the last two, three, four years now. And a lot of that has gone on to equipment, um, necessary fixtures, improvements. Some of that actually has gone to cover ongoing costs. Some of those costs will remain, given that revenue is disappearing. And so, uh, we've had some really nice COVID grants in excess of six hundred thousand for the last two years. Likely that's been going away. And some of the remaining costs that have been absorbed by some of those funds will not have gone away. So that's a part of it.
Who else? Any other questions? Do I have a motion to pass the first reading of the budget? As stated tonight.
So.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderman Dale. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Alderman Linder. Let's hear the roll call, though. Alderman Proctor?
Okay.
Push your button.
Pardon?
Push your button, please.
I'll push your button.
Okay.
Okay.
Alderman Rubeau?
Yes.
Pastor Mayor Dale?
Yes.
Alderman Langford?
Yes.
Alderman Linder?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, one more thing is the airport lawn mower bid. We, um, put a notice out for a bid for a, uh, lawn mower for the airport. Um, we got one bid, um, and we do have grant money for, for this. Um, and it was, um, eighty-six, eighty-six hundred ninety-nine dollars. And that was the only bid that we had for the lawn mower.
Who was it?
It is, um, Full Lumber Service.
Oh, okay. So you said a grant, so it's not gonna come out of the general fund, correct?
That is correct.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, so, um, Linder, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Plankford. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, is there any other business? Rick Schor?
President Linder.
Okay, and a motion to adjourn. Alderman Dale, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Rubeau. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.